Hello, everyone. Hello, Councilor Smith. Andy, Chris, and the other councilors.
Yeah, okay.
Just want to make sure that Councilor Kendall is on. And Gina Martinez said she was calling in, dialing in.
Jerry, do you hear me now?
I can hear you, yes.
Thank you, I'm here.
Okay. Councilor Martinez is having trouble signing in. Give it just another thirty seconds. Okay, I think she's in. All right. Councilor Martinez, can you hear us? She's waiting for the host to let her in. All right. Andy, can you see if Councilor Martinez is waiting to get in?
I believe she's in.
She is. All right. Councilor Martinez, can we, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Perfect. All right. So if everyone else could just mute themselves, that would be great for now. So thank you so much. I'm gonna go ahead and call our City of North Plains City Council's special meeting for Thursday, March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, at four seventeen P M. Councilors, thank you so much for taking the time out of your workday to attend this special meeting. And Lori, can you have a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Lenahan?
Here.
Counselor Fage?
Here.
Counselor Kendall? Counselor Kendall, can you unmute yourself and reply, please?
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Martinez?
Here.
Counselor Papen?
Here.
Counselor Sheldon? I see you, but I didn't hear you.
Present.
Thank you. And Counselor Smith?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Lori. So we have, we've called this meeting today. We have new business to discuss and a resolution number twenty-two fifty-eight to discuss and consider. It is withdrawing the ballot title and explanatory statement for the referendum petition thirty-four dash three twenty-seven. And the Oregon State Legislature passed H B forty-two-six dash A at the closing of the recent session on March seventh, twenty twenty-four. The bill is currently awaiting the governor's signature. In the bill, the legislature determined that a decision to amend an urban growth boundary pursuant to state law is an administrative decision and therefore is not subject to Article four, Section one-five of the Oregon Constitution. Because City Council Ordinance four ninety adopted in September, twenty twenty-three, amends the city U G B, the city council's decision to approve it cannot be referred to the ballot pursuant to House Bill forty-two-six dash A. Upon the governor's signature of the bill, the proposed ballot measure thirty-four dash two thirty-seven will therefore be deemed invalid by the city elections official, which is the city recorder, Washington County Elections Administrator, and the Secretary of State Elections Director. This resolution will be transmitted to the county and state upon adoption. And so I know we have Chris Kreen on the call, and Andy Farner is also here on the call. And at this time, I would like to open the floor up to both Andy and Chris for conversation and also city councilors for conversation and questions as we consider this resolution. Counselor Papen?
Thank you. I guess I'll go ahead and just start with a question. Just out of curiosity, maybe if Chris or Andy can answer this, why are we holding a special meeting instead of waiting until our next regularly scheduled city council meeting? When there would be public comment?
Thank you, Counselor Papen. Andy, if you don't mind, I'll jump in and you can backfill anything I might miss. The problem is that the county's scheduled to print ballots on the twenty, on March twenty-first. So we are quickly running out of time. I have had conversations with county council and their position is they are simply the county, the elections administrator. They can only do what they're told. And right now, they have a ballot title sitting in front of them for the ballot to be printed on the March twenty-first ballot. If there's reason not to put it on the ballot, that direction has to come from the city and probably also the Secretary of State. So it was suggested that we, with issue some direction, we withdraw the ballot title prior to March twenty-first, and hopefully the Secretary of State will give that same instruction to the county elections administrators and that they will then act on that and not put the referral on the ballot. So we're trying to, the county council's position is the city recorder has the authority to submit the ballot title or withdraw the ballot title, but once it's submitted, they have to put it on the ballot absent a court order. And there's no time for a court order, obviously, between now and the twenty-first. So we're acting to go ahead and withdraw the ballot title before then. Andy, did I miss anything?
I don't think so, Chris, and I apologize. My headphones don't work, so it's a very loud background, but that's, that's right, to comply with the new law. Assuming or presuming to be prepared, if the governor does sign the bill, that's a new law on the books. And I think to avoid the mass confusion, if something is printed in a, on a ballot or in a voter's pamphlet to comply with that law, we have to do that at a time in advance.
Okay, Counselor Fage?
Thank you. Let me lower my hand. There you go. My question is this. We, people wanted to have it on a ballot, so the city said, okay, just put it on the ballot. Now the state's gonna say we can't vote on it. Why are we even here? If the state says it's not a voteable thing, then what's the point of taking it off of there? Well, we just let it go and let the state make it invalid. Besides, just the confusion of the factor, right? I mean, right?
Counselor Fage, that's a very good question. And I had that same question for county council. I'm like, just take it off the ballot. The legislature passed a law. And they said, oh, no, you guys are skipping a step. We don't have authority to take it off the ballot. Only the city can withdraw the ballot title. But once we get a ballot title, we have to put it on the ballot, which I think is absurd. But not, but not technically wrong. So, okay, fine, we'll give you a resolution withdrawing the ballot title. And if that's, if that's what you need. So, you know, that, I tend to agree with you. I think it's silly. The law is pretty, is clear on its face. The, this, the city's, the city's decision cannot be referred to the ballot. It's subject to review solely by L C D C. But the county is frankly in a foxhole, and they want to make sure that they're completely covered before they go ahead and pull something from the ballot. So we're just trying to be helpful.
I got a follow-up question. Does this sit on the governor's desk for ninety days and get a pocket veto? Is that how it works? Or do they? I'm not sure. I don't follow the governor's signing. How fast they sign bills? How fast does the governor sign bills?
In this case, the governor has, the governor has up to thirty days. But it's our understanding she intends to sign it the first part of next week.
So, the first part of next week, Wednesday is the twenty-first, right? I think it is.
Thursday, Thursday.
So if he signs it before Thursday, do we even need to do this?
Again, the county is taking the position that unless somebody withdraws it from the ballot, they don't have authority to just strike it.
So, even if, even if the law is there, we still have to take it off the ballot through the, if it is a matter.
That's what the county is telling us. And since they're in charge of printing the ballots, I'm going to give them what they need to take it off the ballot. Andy is exactly right. If this, if this ends up on the ballot and it's not valid, then what do we do with the results? I mean, why would you even, for heaven's sakes, have an election on something that is no longer legal? So if the county needs this to take it off the ballot, let's do everybody a favor and give them what they need.
Thank you.
Um, I have a couple of process questions for you, Chris.
Thank you.
So I'm, just for clarity, what's the, the basic requirements for this special meeting? And noticing of the meeting?
So under state law, and that's O R S one ninety-two point six, I made myself note, or six forty, you have to provide at least twenty-four hours' notice. And that is also what your city code requires in municipal code, Section thirty-point oh-one C. For a special meeting, you have to provide at least twenty-four hours' notice. And in this case, more than twenty-four hours' notice was provided. We have, we can get, the, your Lori Lesmeister is prepared to sign anything to that effect. And frankly, we got comments from the public noting that it was posted as of three-thirty yesterday, which is more than twenty-four hours in advance. So that's the, the state and local law requirement.
Okay, thank you for that. And is this resolution twenty-two fifty-eight, is it considered an administrative decision for the City of North Plains?
That's correct. So under your charter, and this is in Sections nineteen to twenty-one, administrative actions are an action by the city council directing staff to take particular actions. It can also be used to, a resolution to declare the will of the city council on a matter of public interest. If you want to take a position on, you know, veterans affairs or something, whatever, you would do that by resolution. And again, those, the procedures for adopting a resolution are in the charter in Sections nineteen to twenty-one. It has been claimed by others that this is, that the provisions that apply to an ordinance could apply, but that's just not true. An ordinance establishes the law for the city, and this is not the law. This is just directing staff to take a particular action. So yes, it's a resolution because it's an administrative action.
Perfect. Does the city have the authority to declare H B forty-two-six unconstitutional?
No, no, it does not. Under state law, a statute is presumed to be constitutional until a court says otherwise. And Court of Competent Jurisdiction and North Plains City Council is not a Court of Competent Jurisdiction. You do not have authority to declare a statute to be unconstitutional. If there are folks out there who believe that to be the case, they need to challenge the statute in court. But until then, again, a statute is presumed to be constitutional until a court says otherwise. So we have to follow the law as it is today.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is, if this resolution does pass today, what are the next steps for the city's election official, AKA the city recorder?
So that, as it says in the resolution, if the governor signs the bill, the city recorder is instructed to notify the county elections staff, officials, that the county is withdrawing the ballot title that was submitted to them along with the state elections form, the S E L eight oh-two. So that would be, assuming the governor signs the bill, that would be the next step for city staff.
And is there any reason that you can think of for the City of North Plains to not have their ducks in a row for next week?
No, if the governor signs the bill, we absolutely, I mean, there's no reason to wait until that happens. If she doesn't sign the bill, then we will never, then we won't withdraw the ballot title from the county elections folks. But there's no reason not to be prepared if the governor does, in fact, sign it.
And also, since the county is requesting this additional information as well, we're kind of complying with their request as well, correct?
That's correct. As I mentioned to Counselor Fage, I you know, I, it's, I think it's a little silly, but strictly speaking, they're not wrong. They're the elections administrator. They're not the elections official. That would, the elections official in this case is the county, is the city recorder. So they want their city recorder to take the step of withdrawing the ballot title so that they can remove it from the ballot.
Okay. Counselor Fage? You're muted?
Yes, I'm muted. Thank you. To make it clear, and I just want to be very clear about this. If the governor does not sign this law, then this motion will not go to the ballots, right? I'm sorry, it will not go, we will not put this motion through. This is only in case the law is signed by the governor.
That's correct. As it says in the resolution, stat, if staff is directed to withdraw the ballot title on or after the date the governor signs the bill. So if the governor doesn't sign the bill, we do not withdraw the ballot title.
Then, good, thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Counselor Martinez?
Thank you. I kind of piggybacked on that. So are we allowed to have the ballot measure removed when the governor hasn't signed this House bill?
The instructions that, that in the resolution that are going to staff are to withdraw the ballot title only after the governor signs the bill. So if the governor does not sign the bill, nothing changes.
Got it. So we just, we have this kind of direction, and it'll be removed once it's appropriate to, to do so.
Correct.
Got it.
And, if appropriate, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
As you all, as you all know, under our system of government, it's not a law until the governor signs it. So, it's not a law until the governor signs it, so we're waiting for the governor to sign it.
Happy with that. Lady.
Are there, Counselor Smith, Counselor Sheldon, Counselor Kendall, any questions? Counselor Sheldon?
I, you know, I felt like this thing wasn't referable from the beginning, frankly. And I looked at a lot of the opinions of the appellate courts. And, you know, my concern was, okay, are we going about this the right way in terms of unwinding it? And I think from the standpoint of what a question I had, you've answered, because this is going to be a conditional resolution that if, if in fact, it doesn't get signed, then nothing goes forward. And then if it does, it gets pulled. And I think it's the right way to unwind this. So to me, I'm, I'm resolute moving forward with this resolution. I don't, I don't see, despite the, you know, there's some calls for the constitutionality of the voice of the people, and I'm just not sure that applies in this case. I know people do want to voice their concerns, but, you know, I think we're past that point.
Thank you, Counselor Sheldon. Counselor Smith or Counsel, Counselor Kendall?
I'll make a comment. I'm like, Russ, this should have been done a long time ago. But we keep getting pushed back to where we're at now. So my only comment was, vote on it, and I'm a yes.
Okay. Kendall?
Yes, I, yes, Mayor. I've heard all the questions, and I'm, I'm ready to vote, and I support this resolution. So I'm ready to go. I don't think I have to give my reasons why I'm supporting it now when I did not, when I supported the agricultural theme back then, but when they came ahead and went into the city and and exercised their rights supposedly to get this on the ballot, that, that turned my stomach, and I'm now in support of this all the way. Thank you so much. I was never opposed against it at the beginning. I was supporting agriculture outside the city. They had their constitutional rights to, to oppose what the city was doing, but not to do when they came into the city. I feel that was wrong. And I'll stand by that any, every day of the week. It's our, it's our city, and, and in retrospect, it's, I've been here long enough. I like to say it's also my city, too. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Chris, there was one other question. I know with special meetings, can you just clarify as far as public comment is concerned?
Right, so this is, I'll talk, speak generally on this because I think it's a useful moment to sort of convey this information. But in general terms, and this is true frankly, all across the country, people are entitled to attend public meetings and observe what their public officials are doing, what you're talking about, what you're considering, the votes that you take. They're not entitled necessarily to speak. Now, that has become a common tradition, allowing people to speak, but it's not required. And it certainly is not required when a city, when a city, in this case, North Plains, calls a special meeting for a particular purpose. So there is no legal requirement to allow public testimony generally. There are exceptions to that rule. For example, under state statute, one ninety-seven point seven nine seven, for a quasi judicial land use hearing, you have to allow public testimony. But for general city matters, you do not. So I know that you often put public comment on your agendas, and that's a discretionary act, and I think it's great. But it is not required, particularly when you're, there's something that is time sensitive or the council just wants to, like work sessions, for example. People are not entitled to participate at a work session either. And this is very similar to that. So the, for us, particularly when it's for a special meeting like this, and whether it's an identified subject matter, people are entitled to attend, to observe, to listen, and to hear the vote, but they're not entitled to participate as a matter of law.
Thank you for that clarity. I appreciate that. So I'm really curious, counsel, any more discussion or questions that you have? Counselor Papen?
Thank you. I am gonna go out on a limb here, and I know this might be unpopular opinion with some. But I just want to make sure that I am crystal clear that if we do, let's say this resolution does not pass today, the outcome would be if the governor signs the bill and the ballots would be printed with the measure on there. Is that correct, Chris?
That's correct.
And there would be no repercussion, per se, for either, either for or against side, because it would just be null and void. Is that right?
Good question. Presumably, there would be somebody, and those folks are out there, would file a lawsuit against the county to prove, have, to prohibit the county elections official from certifying the vote on the theory that the election itself was unlawful. So there would, there would presumably be a lawsuit on one side or the other, depending on what the county elections folks will do. Yeah, so that, that's the, if, if this ends up on the ballot because the governor waits too long to sign the bill or for some other reason, and then the bill becomes law, then it's, there's, who knows what's gonna happen? I think the greatest likelihood is that there would be a lawsuit challenging the county's ability to certify the result of the election. So the votes would be cast, but they wouldn't be counted, and they would never be certified. And you can imagine how happy that's gonna make people.
So win or lose, wherever the ballot goes, there'll, there'll be a lawsuit at that point?
If the governor's, let's say the governor waits two weeks, so the ballots get printed with the referral on it, and then the governor signs the bill, then, the bill's retroactive to last year, right? So this bill, this referral should not have ended up on the ballot, but because the governor signed too late, the bills, the ballots got printed, it would be a mess. Arguably, that none of those votes count because they're now prohibited by law. But we'd have to get a court to say that. So there'd be lawsuits, preliminary injunctions, lots of, of time and money spent in court trying to figure out, trying to unwind the mess. So that's why a lot of folks are encouraging the governor to go ahead and sign this sooner rather than later and not to print the ballots with the referral on it, because it's just gonna cause a downstream mess. Counselor Papen, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Fage?
Thank you. I have one more thing. Just use this as a data point. Even though it's null and void, it's not gonna matter. Use it as a data point, say, hey, look, guys, that said, but you guys passed back in two thousand and sixteen, that took the voting rights away from the people to do this. We can use as a data point, say, hey, we like to be able to vote for us back again. That data point would be nothing to be challenging lawsuits and
I'm sorry, I'm not sure. What's the data point?
If we, if, if it is printed and the law is signed by the governor, but is still printed out, we just can't have as a data point saying, hey, people want to have a chance to vote on these things instead of it being like an administrative action. We can't just use as a data point, it didn't just be like lawsuits and
It's, it's an advisor, it's an advisory vote. I mean, at that point, it becomes an advisory vote because it doesn't have any legal standing. Right? And so what?
Pretend it's two-four.
I beg your pardon, sorry?
I'm just trying to figure out what the problem of an advisory vote is.
What do you do with the advice? You've already approved the ordinance amending the urban growth boundary. Who's being, who's supposed to act on that data point? It's a, it's a decision out there that has no legal standing, no legal bearing. It, it might, in fact, confuse people who believe that the city's urban growth boundary could not, was not expanded because it was defeated by the voters when in fact, the vote had no bear, legal bearing whatsoever. So it just continues the confusion by allowing it to go on the ballot in the first place.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other questions, comments from the council? All right. What is the will of the council?
I'm gonna go ahead and move approval of resolution number two-two-five-eight, a resolution of the City of North Plains, Oregon, withdrawing the ballot title and explanatory statement for referendum petition three-four dash two-three-seven.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? All right. In this particular instance, I'm gonna go ahead and do a roll call vote. So Lori, I'm gonna turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Fage?
Aye.
Counselor Kendall?
Aye.
Counselor Martinez?
Aye.
Counselor Papen?
Aye.
Counselor Sheldon?
Aye.
And Counselor Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor Lenahan?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. All right. So we have a unanimous approval to approve resolution number two-two-five-eight withdrawing the ballot title and explanatory statement for referendum petition three-four dash three-two-seven. So moved. So at this time, we do not have anything else on our agenda. And at this time, I will go ahead and close the city council special meeting at four forty-three P. M. Thank you all for being here.
Bye.
Bye.
Good night. See ya.